Everyone, and welcome to the December 8th, 2025 Farmington Hills City Council Meeting. Calling the meeting to order, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mike Sweeney from our Emergency Preparedness Commission.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sweeney, we'll hear from you in a few. Roll call, please.
Council members Aldred?
Here.
Boloware?
Here.
Bridges?
Here.
Dwyer?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Starkman?
Here.
You're rich.
Here.
Okay, looking for approval of the regular session agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, quit, 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 quit. You go ahead.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda for December 8th as printed.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that carries. Item two, selection of Mayor Pro Tem. Are there nominations?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilmember Jackie Boloware as Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
We have a motion and a support.
Madam Mayor, also I move the nomination to be closed.
Okay, that's, that has been moved, and is there a support? Okay, I will second that nomination. So, the first vote is on the, sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. What was the, what was the? Closing the nominations. Support, well, yes. Okay, yep, all right. So, motion and support, and so.
Council, first we vote on the motion to close?
Yes, you could, you would at this point vote on the motion to close the nominations.
Okay, this is a regular vote? I'm asking, yes, okay. Then, there's a motion to close nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, that carries. And now we have the nomination of Councilmember Boloware to be our next Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Ms. Boloware. For the community, Ms. Boloware was previously Mayor Pro Tem, but it was during COVID. And so, this time she will have the opportunity to serve with a full year and be able to attend all of the events and so on. So, looking forward to serving. Did you want to, Ms. Boloware, did you want to say anything?
I am thrilled and excited, and I look forward to that opportunity in the coming months. And I'd like to thank all of my council members for the vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to announcements, presentations from city boards, commissions, and public officials. Mr. Sweeney. Emergency Preparedness Tip of the Month, please.
Madam Mayor, member of council, city staff, I'm Mike Sweeney. I'm one of your emergency, emergency preparedness commissioners. Gosh, '25 has gone along so fast. It just seems like we're just having the '24 presentation moments ago, but here we are in 2025. And I follow a lot of the different weather forecasting organizations, and they tell us that today is the last bright sunny 25-degree day we should expect for quite a while. They were not very, very pessimist, or not very optimistic about what's going on forward, and they reminded us that now is the time, last chance, to get your house ready for the coming winter. And we've talked before about that means getting your furnace tuned up and furnace filters and changing the batteries in your smoke detectors, getting your car ready, all those things. But one of the commentators was going off in a completely different direction. He's talking about when you're trying to keep your pipes from freezing at night, this winter is supposed to be very cold, which means that our gas and electric bills are going to go up. So, he presupposes we're all going to be turning our, our heat down. He suggests we stop turning it down at 66. He suggested 68. And he said if you take it down to 55, please don't take it any lower, because then your pipes will start to freeze, and you do not want frozen pipes. If I turn the thermostat down to 55 in my house, I'm not sure what would happen, but it wouldn't be good for Mike. It just would not. So, assuming you turn it down to 66, the suggestions we do have is, is leave the cupboard doors open under your sinks. Let the heat get into your sink. Of course, do this carefully if you have small children, if you have pets. Maybe you can't do that. Maybe you make some other arrangements. But leave the pipes exposed as much as you can, and the, and the water department will be mad at me because they hate it when the water pressure goes down, but drip your pipes. Turn it on, just, just a little drip, let it go all night long, though the water moving through your pipes, it may not move your wa, your water bill up that much, but it will keep your pipes from freezing. Now, you take 89,000 homes and apartments, maybe the water department has a different perspective on that, but I'm not here to speak for them. I'm here to speak for our families, and I say drip your pipes. And for, I also talked about, this might be a good time to take a look at your wardrobes, those tube socks and those tennis shoes you've been enjoying all summer long. Maybe you want to replace them with wool socks and lined boots that are waterproof. And definitely check maybe last year's snow pants don't fit quite as, as nicely as they did last year. Take a look at your jacket and gloves and hats, all of your winter wardrobe, take a look at it, and if your clothes have been lightly used, take them down to the shelters. Maybe there's somebody who can make, maybe someone a little smaller in size than you can make use of last year's wardrobe. The Preparedness Commission just recommends you take care of yourself, you take care of your family, you take care of your friends and neighbors. We would like for you to update your, your communications list, to make sure that if your family needs to get ahold of you, they know where to find you. If you need to get ahold of them, you know where to find them, and do check on your neighbors, because it's just a good thing to do for the sense of community. With that, we'll close out 2025, and we'll see you in 2026. Thank you.
Happy New Year. Okay. That then takes us to correspondence. Anyone have correspondence that they would like to share? Okay, I know a number of us have been continuing to hear some concerns about some beagles. And so, just so that the community is aware, we had code enforcement from Oakland County, as well as our police department went out late this last week to take a look at the situation. We have been advised that the shelter that the dogs are in is heated, that there is water that is not frozen, that there is food, and that there is appropriate bedding, and that the kennels that they are in are, is off the ground. So, there's, what we're told is there is compliance with all of Michigan's ordinances, and this is something that we will be bringing to the goal-setting session in January to discuss whether we want to look at doing something else as a council. But I just wanted to address that because I've had a number of, of correspondence, and I'm sure all of you have as well. So, that's what's going on with the beagles. That then takes us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, all the items listed are considered routine, administrative, or non-controversial by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration. They will be read by our Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item four, recommended approval of the 2026 City Council Annual Meeting Calendar. Number five, recommended approval of setting the City Council Annual Goal Session Dates of January 10th, 2026. Item six, recommended approval of the removal and replacement of windows at the Nature Center at Regal, to Regal Construction, Inc., in amount of $58,794.90, CMR 12-25-176. Number seven, recommended approval of the extension of agreement for street sweeping services to G&amp;M Enterprises in the amount not to exceed the annual budget amount with optional extension, CMR 12-25-177. Item number eight, recommended approval of the award of dump truck and pickup truck upfitting to truck and trailer specialties in the amount of $413,770.86, CMR 12-25-178. Item nine, recommended approval award of proposal for youth theater services to the Mitten Productions for a one-year contract with an optional renewal, CMR 12-25-179. Number 10, recommend approval of purchase, recommend of a purchase of a purchase of an ambulance to Emergency Vehicle Plus, representing Horton, in the amount of $397,464, CMR 12-25-180. Number 11, recommended approval of City Council Study Session Minutes of November 24th, 2025. Number 12, recommended approval of City Council Regular Session Meetings Minutes of November 24th, 2025. And that concludes my last consent agenda as Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the last consent agenda, read by our current Mayor Pro Tem, Bill Dwyer.
With, thanks.
Second.
We have motion and support. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Starkman?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure. Okay, that then takes us to council member comments and announcements. Who would like to go? Mr. Starkman?
Yes.
Or Dr. Starkman?
It's okay, whichever one. So, since 2019, I've had the pleasure of being one of the commissioners on the Farmington, Farmington Hills Commission on Community Health. I was initially a regular member and then have served as the secretary and vice chair, so just wanted to announce that several members of the commission volunteered at CARES on Tuesday, did a lot of work with labeling and, and unpacking, and just, I'm, just enjoying the space, and they helped greatly at a time when more and more people are relying on CARES and are experiencing food insecurity. So, just wanted to share that with council and to thank, to thank the commission for the work that they do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Boloware?
Yes, since this is our, our last official council meeting for this year, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, as well as a Happy Kwanzaa.
Thank you. Ms. Noel?
Yes, and I just received my Farmington area Goodfellows newspaper in the mail. Maybe many of you did as well, but if you didn't, I just want to let you know that the Goodfellows are well underway packing boxes. They had their food drive this November. You could have dropped off food at the city halls, the libraries. I know Farmington Public Schools participated. But if you didn't have a chance and you'd still like to donate, they are always taking financial contributions. If interested, their website is www-goodfellows.info. Also, if you're interested in volunteering, the delivery date is Saturday, December 20th. So, they're packing the boxes now, and then on the 20th, they will be driving the boxes around. All the volunteers will put the boxes in the back of their vehicles and bring them to seniors or needy families in the Farmington, Farmington Hills community. So, they're a great organization, and I also will say since this is the last meeting, again, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Years, just in general, happy holidays to everyone. Hope you enjoy time with family and friends and relax a little and give thanks for the true meaning of the season.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, we all attended events this past week. I know that we all, we went to the chamber outing on, I think it was on Friday?
Yeah.
That was a nice celebration of the chamber. In fact, a lot of the businesses there were from our community, and funds raised at that event was for CARES, which is excellent. And then we had an opportunity to go to the 50th anniversary for the public libraries in Farmington Hills. There's some excellent, some wonderful plans that are being, were unveiled there in regards to expansion of the Farmington Library in Farmington, Michigan, along with the Library on 12 Mile Road. What an excellent community asset our library is in our community. I know Councilmember Aldred was there, along with Councilmember Noel, myself, and the mayor was there as well. And we had an opportunity to see these plans, and our library system clearly is a jewel for our community and a community asset, and also wanted to recognize Lori Seacris, I mean Kelly Seacris, the current library director. She spent 30-plus years with the library, and she's moving on, and I want to thank her for her wonderful service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd just like to wish the community, the city of Farmington Hills, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and really a special thanks to the workers here as, as far as the police and fire departments doing an excellent job, and the civilian employees of the city of Farmington Hills, because you all do a great job. I know the fire department, the police department had a real busy year this year. It's been very difficult for both departments, and I, I'm glad you got through the department and stayed safe. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Aldred?
If I may just add one more item, since we're all giving our good reports, we had a council, I think a number of us, so we were at the holidays event, downtown Farmington Parade, and again, Special Services went above and beyond with their reindeer festoon truck, which was, which was fantastic. We got several thumbs up saying it was the best float, so very much enjoyed that, and it was wonderful to wish everybody there a Merry Christmas as we, as we went down the Grand River. So, yeah, that was a good event, too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still smiling from Saturday. That was a lot of fun, and what a great job our city did. Want to echo a couple of things and then add a couple. Folks, we had another fire at a place that did not have working smoke alarms. If you get yourself anything for a holiday gift, please make sure you have a working smoke alarm and smoke detector, as well as a carbon monoxide detector in your home.
Fire department comes by free.
Yes, and, and our fire department will come out to your home and install them for free, so please do make sure you get that done. And then, a couple other things. Thank you to the staff for doing such an amazing job. Thank you for the community. Wouldn't want to live anywhere else. Had a couple of events this last week that I wanted to share. One, we had Walk the Hawk on a Sunday. This would be one and only time we're going to do it on a Sunday. Had several people come out, they wanted to talk about the replacement for the Caustic Center and share their views on that. We had, and going forward, Walk the Hawk will be every second Tuesday, 7:00 PM, at the Hawk. If it's gorgeous out, we'll be on the track, but for the next little while, we're going to be on the third floor of the Hawk, so please join us there. The Feeding Farmington Hills Task Force met today. We learned that there's a lot of good things happening in the community, but also, you know, there's going to be additional need for food. A lot of our kids in the community eat breakfast and lunch because they're at school, and when they're not at school, they don't. And so, while a number of our charities are doing a super job making sure that there are some supplements provided, we know that CARES is going to be closed. We've been told CARES is going to be closed while the schools are closed, and so the task force is looking at having a supplemental food distribution of several hundred standardized boxes of food that, that are appropriate for kids to handle for themselves. So, breakfast items, mac and cheese, I will let council know what those items are. And then we're looking at having, having a distribution on the 29th, which is pretty much in the middle of the holiday for families, at the hospital, the Corwell. So, more to follow on that, and we will put out information on that on the city website, as well as the library website. And other than that, happy holidays, everybody. Thank you for a great year. Looking forward to a wonderful year next year. With that, we'll turn it over to the city manager update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council. So, just a few things tonight. This, for those that are still interested, this is the last week for yard waste pickup, so if you can find your leaves under all the snow, good luck. But this is the last week for that. And speaking of snow, I just wanted to remind everyone that's watching about our snow, winter, winter maintenance policy for snow plowing. And so, just to refresh everybody's memory, we have different categories for snowfall events. So, for snowfall events, less than four inches, you know, we, we plow and salt all major roads as we do for the bus routes, our local streets. We only do spot de-icing. We do not plow if it's less than four inches of snow. Over four inches of snow, same thing with the majors and the school buses, but then we'll go onto the local streets and we salt. So, anything over four inches will be in your neighborhood, and heaven forbid, if we have over eight inches of snow, you know, our, our DPS crews and Parks and Rec crews will be out. DPS will be out on the public streets, plowing main line roads first until they're made completely safe and, as we call, blown open, and then we start to go into the locals to take care of those with the goal of trying to get all of the snow removed within a 36-hour period after the end of the snow falling. So, just wanted to let everybody know about that. And in the same line of, of the holiday cheer, as our fire department says, please water your tree so we don't have to. We don't want to see any fires during the holiday season, and with that, again, happy holidays, everybody. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And if you could please remind the city, what are the rules for the warming centers? When do we operate the warming centers, where, and hours, please?
I, you caught me off guard with that one, but if, if we have major power outages or if there are folks that are looking for a warming center, are we, are we all ready for 24/7 operation yet or no? Okay, which would be at Station 5, right? Okay.
Okay, so Station 5 Orchard Lake and 11 Mile is available 24/7, so people can stay warm.
And I would add, if people are confused about the winter maintenance policy, it's all on the website at FHgov.com.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. All right, that then takes us to unfinished business. Item three, consideration of amendment to planned unit development for 2000, cutting-edge cuisine kitchen and storage addition. Good evening.
Good evening. Charmaine Kettler Schmalt, Director of Planning Community Development. The item before you this evening is an update to a PUD for a property on Northwestern Highway. This has been before you a couple of times previous. Unfortunately, resolution of outstanding issues has not been obtained by the property owner and the adjacent properties that are, have an interest in what happens here. So, we did receive a request through the property owner's attorney to postpone the item yet again. Of course, that it's at the discretion of the council. If you'd like me to go through the items that are part of this request, I can. I know that it's been before you previously, and whatever, whatever your indication is.
So, did the attorney indicate postpone to when?
He did not. He did not. We don't have another meeting this month, as you've noted a couple of times. This has been postponed twice, originally coming before you in October. We're now in December. I don't know what likelihood there is for there a quick resolution on this. The only request that I got was, please postpone.
So, they don't want it removed?
Not that I know of. Steve may have some additional information.
Yeah, I, I do. The attorney did indicate in his request that they are continuing negotiations, so there was some indication that they're continuing to talk to each other to try and work this out, and that's the reason they're asking for some more time so that they can try and work it out. And so, if they are able to work it out, it would come before council with any, without any objections raised by the other property owners in the PUD. So, if you were to postpone it, you know, given the, the progress and how, how it has been proceeding to this point, I, and the holidays as well, you're definitely, he did say until next year, I think, or we, it, it had a minimum would be till next year, but you may want to add some, some time on it, because it does sound like it is taking a fair amount of effort on their part to, to work through their issues, so.
Maybe first meeting in February?
I, I think that is probably a reasonable amount of time for them to, to get through this, and I, you know, I think we can try and make another communication with them as time is proceeding to see how they're doing.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, is a motion ordered for postponement?
I, I think it would be.
Good.
And what's our first meeting in February date, please?
February 9th.
All right. I make a motion that we postpone this matter until February 9th, 2026.
Mr. Morton?
Okay, we have a motion and support. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Carries. All right, that is all the business on the agenda. It now takes us to public comment, and we have people who've been to public comment before, so you all know the rules. It's three minutes. This is your opportunity to come share with us. This is not a dialogue back and forth. Mr. Williams Stiber, please come. Yep, you're first, to be followed by Tim Parvin, to be followed by Eric Schmidt.
It's kind of nice. The last time I wasn't, I had to wait a couple hours, but. Hello, I'm Bill Steber, live in Farmington Hills, Kimberly Sub. I haven't been here since August, and I'm here because I didn't want the city council to forget about me. The topic is Farmington Hills, minimum water charge is 16 units for each quarter for all homeowners. Older and other residents are paying for 16 units, even though the usage is a lot less. One resident I know has been charged for 16 units of water and sewage, even though her usage has been four to eight units per quarter for the last three years. This is not fair. Water should be charged for actual usage, like gas and electric are charged. I have talked to Tammy Gussard and Karen, and they both say a consultant will be hired to look into the unfair minimum charge. I need this to be a priority for the next assessment update in June. I can get others interested, like the Farmington Hills Council on Age and local subdivisions and the internet, if usage is not fairly resolved. Do what's right. That's, that's all I have to say. I just want to make sure you're not forgetting about, you know, the older people that are being charged, you know, and you're new to us, you haven't heard this before, but, but thank you.
You, happy holidays. Tim Parvin, to be followed by Eric Schmidt.
By the way, happy holidays, too.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Parvin.
Good evening. My name's Tim Parvin, 33-year resident of Farmington Hills. Greetings to council members and the mayor. I come before you this evening after the previous council meeting regarding the future of the senior center. It was most interesting to observe the dance around the language of Councilman Aldred's motion that passed 4 to 3, which is not exactly an overwhelming mandate. As many members in the audience that night heard, the motion was to explore the Site D with a study to determine future costs, consideration what is currently being offered at the Caustic Center for the seniors who comprise 32% of our population. There was strong opposition to the Hawk campus idea. Just today, just today, there were 155 cars at the Hawk, excuse me, at Caustic. This evening, there were 57. By the same measure, there were 105 cars at the, the Hawk, but yet tonight, there were 239 cars there. And that also includes nine transit vans that have to be stored currently at the Caustic Center. And this was a normal day at the Hawk. So, where are you going to put all of these 250 cars a day at the Hawk where seniors will have ease of access? There's also a major concern that food service could be farmed out and trucked in. I think that would impact quality and the variety of food that's offered for our seniors. But as we all heard it, it sounded like council was willing to explore Site D before making a commitment to the change. However, in this message that came out afterward- that's offered for our seniors. But as we all heard it, it sounded like council was willing to explore Site D before making a commitment to the change. However, in this message that came out afterwards, it sounds like the vote allows for Farmington government to replace the Caustic Center and move it to the Hawk. That's not how most folks really interpreted what happened at last time at the council's meeting. So are you deciding what you think seniors need, or are you listening to what's good for the seniors? Instead of pushing, pushing the seniors and shoehorning them into a corner of the, of the Hawk property, I would encourage you to keep an open mind, that after the review of the study, that, that a new facility at the Hawk might be the better option. It's certainly a better location, and it's more cost-effective as well. To foster a buy-in by your senior community, I have a suggestion. Perhaps we could appoint someone from the Council on Aging, that, that person could be part of the team, make him an ombudsman of such, or of sorts, that could report an update and keep the seniors informed, rather than, you know, waiting for some announcement, you know, sometime in the future. After all, the new facility is for the betterment of the community. We are a government for the residents of our community, and we appreciate our community. As you've heard, many seniors have been longtime residents, raised their children here. Okay. But anyway, I would encourage you to, to think about an ombudsman, just to kind of keep us all on the same page. And we could all buy in with that as part of the process. Thank you for this time to speak. And I wish all of you a happy holidays as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parvin. Happy holidays. Mr. Schmidt?
Hi, good evening. Happy holidays, Ms. Bolware. Congratulations on being mayor pro tem. Couple of quick items. These are repeats. So I have received a notification or a response back to my request to have city council mayor make a statement on the, on the statement that the Keldean community representatives made. And I went back, watched the video, and I do appreciate what Mayor Rich said about freedom of speech, and also that public speakers, public representatives do have a bit more of a target on their back and have to take some of the criticism in stride, and, and should expect more criticism. I greatly appreciate that. Sorry that that happens. That is unfortunate. But my bigger point was not just regarding what they said about a previous council member, but more so that some of those comments were directed towards residents and towards us, towards the neighbors. So making some sort of statement about keeping it away from us and keeping us out of the crossfire, or at least in such strong terms, I would appreciate that. Second, we still have an open invitation to anybody that wants to come and walk our property for the 13-mile PUD. If you've already decided that you're going to vote no, or rather, vote yes on the PUD and have not come out to visit, it is of my opinion that you are in derelict of your duty, that you are not taking this seriously, that you have some other ulterior agenda, and that you are not willing to come and do what you are supposed to do, which is hear your residents, hear the constituents, see it from their perspective, and perhaps offer a bit of an explanation as to why you have already decided that you're going to vote no. Or, I'm sorry, vote yes. I keep on saying no, because it's against what I want. Also ask that the city attorney take another consideration on saying that those campaign donations are not influencing potential decisions. If there is only one member of city council and the mayor's seat that is voting to push through PUDs, and that is the person that has received the most contributions from developers, perhaps there is an opportunity to look a little bit deeper into that in terms of being swayed by that money that's coming in. It was 6 to 1 the other day. 6 to 1. And, and I, and I hope that that doesn't happen again. But if that's going to be a continued theme, I think that there needs to be further investigation into whether or not people should be recusing themselves if they're accepting money and continuing to vote on the same, same subject. Also, very, very briefly, I don't want the Caustic Center at the Hawk. I use the Hawk. I'm there in the mornings. I only go in the mornings. I'm there by 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the morning, because the rest of the day, it is packed, parking lot, not great. And no offense, I'm kind of done looking at 80-year-old butts in the locker room. So thank you very much.
Happy holidays. Okay, that is it for the people who've requested public comment. That leads us to the city attorney report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to add or change to the report. It remains as presented.
Okay. And with that, we are adjourned. We'll see you in the new year.